I'd like to remind everyone that we are still under COVID restrictions. And so if we can try to hear those as much as possible. Also, we'd like to remind everyone at this time, including myself, to silence our cellphones at this time. Make sure that we don't disturb during our meeting today. I do want to say that we had the oath of office earlier for Commissioner Freeman-Harrison. And I wanted to say upfront that it's been a long time since there's been seven commissioners sitting up here together. The loss of Commissioner John Bell and Commissioner Joe Gurley has left a hole and a vacancy in our heart. And keep in mind, gentlemen, whenever we sit in these seats, there has been some really premier people that sit in these seats before us. For example, Commissioner Acock is sitting in Representative Bell's seat. Well, Commissioner Acock says, you know, Commissioner Bell, for 19 years, he always wore a tie. Wayne says, no matter what our summer attire is, I'm going to wear a tie in honor of Commissioner Bell. So whenever we sit in these seats, you can feel the commissioners that have sat here before us.
Your loving armor protection that we may endure. Protect our families, our children, our mothers, brothers, sisters, everyone from this horrible virus that's sweeping our nation. Dear Hail and Father, we ask you to lead our, promote our leaders to make good decisions, dear Hail and Father, of those procedures that would cause us to be as safe as humanly possible, knowing that our ultimate safety rests with you. Dear Hail and Father, we ask you to guide our thoughts, our minds, our tongues, that we may be making the right decisions for the benefit of our citizens of Wayne County. We ask you to give your protection as our young men and young women move about the county working to make Wayne County safer, our emergency crews, our policemen, all those who are designated to keep the peace. Dear Hail and Father, we ask you to give them the mindset that is done proper and within range of their responsibilities. Dear Hail and Father, we ask all these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Vice Chairman, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of our Commissioner Minutes from July 8th of 2020. What's the purpose of the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Motion carries. Also, at this time, we have a discussion of an adjustment of our agenda. Mr. Hennecut.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to add two things under New Business. We would create a new section of New Business after the consent agenda. Number one is recommendation from the Board of Elections to enter into a contract with Mr. Dane Beavers to consult with the Board of Elections during the 2020 election cycle for a contract not to exceed $30,000. And the number two is a request from the Board of Elections to add the new position of Elections Administrator. And we'd like to add that under New Business.
Okay. Does any commissioners have any additions or have a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Senator.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Everyone in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we're unanimous. Motion carries. Mr. Hennecut.
I will turn this over to Commissioner Acock for our special presentation for Mr. Anderson.
It's a great honor today to present this award to Mr. Woodrow Anderson. I had the pleasure of meeting with him and his family Sunday afternoon. They had a big party planned for this past Saturday, but with the way things are today that's going on, they had to scale back. So they kind of made a three-day party out of it. So I'd like to say, I had the pleasure of meeting with him Sunday afternoon, but felt like that Mr. Anderson still needed to come before this full board and with our Public Affairs Department streaming this live so other people in the county that may not have heard about the great life of Mr. Woodrow Anderson. Been on this board almost eight years, and this is probably one of the most humbling things that I've been asked to do. Just think about 100 years. What has Mr. Anderson seen change in that timeframe? Can you imagine the type of airplanes that were flying when he was born in 1920 and how it has changed? You know, come from staying in the air for just a few seconds to walking on the moon has changed in his lifetime. Mr. Anderson, if you would come forward, I'd like to present this resolution to you again.
You good?
We're going to hold it down, and I'm going to read it again to you. Resolution 2020-26, a resolution honoring the 100th birthday of Mr. Woodrow Anderson. Whereas Woodrow Anderson was born July 20, 1920, in Mount Olive, Wayne County, through GSCN and Janie Anderson. And whereas Woodrow Anderson served honorably in the United States Navy for four years during World War II, serving in both the European and Pacific Theater, and being awarded six battle stars. Mr. Anderson was on the USS Topeka next to the Missouri, witnessed the signing of Japan's surrender. And whereas Woodrow Anderson was married to Minnie Mae for 59 years, and they had five children and seven grandchildren. And whereas Woodrow Anderson made his career in HVAC trade, beginning with Goldboro 10 Shop before opening and running Anderson 10 Shop until his retirement. And whereas Woodrow Anderson has always been faithful to God and his church, having served as deacon with Grace Baptist Church, attending Second Baptist Church, and continued today as a member of the First General Calum and Holiness Church in Goldboro. Now thoroughly therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Board of Commissioners recognize Mr. Woodrow Anderson's contributions to our community and our armed service and to our God. Additionally, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners recognize July 21, 2020, as Woodrow Anderson Day in Wayne County, and invites his citizens, the citizens, to send him wishes for his 100th birthday. Adopted this day, 21st day of July, 2020, is signed by Chairman E. Ray Mayo. And Mr. Anderson, as I told you, Sunday. We need more people like you. I mean, what you and other men and women went through during World War II to give us the freedom and the rights that we have today and to see some of the things that's going on today, it hurts all of us. But thank you again for your service to our country and to our state and to Wayne County. Thank you again so much.
Good day. Good day. Thank you so much.
And I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to adopt this resolution. Any discussion? What a great day to honor a great person. We have a motion on the floor, all in favor. Let me wait for Mr. Acock to come up. All in favor of adopting this resolution 2020-26. Raise your right hand, please. We are unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Thank you for coming.
Our family thanks you. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Would you like to say something, Mr. Anderson? Mr. Woodrow, would you like to say something?
Yeah, Wayne County has been good to me and my family, and we thank all of you.
Great. Okay. Any other family members?
I can't say it in bare, he does. You can hear him now. He loves Wayne County, and we thank the citizens and we thank the board for recognizing our father in such a special way.
He's a special person. Yes, special person. Thank you for coming. Okay, at this time, we have, we're on time. We have a nine o'clock public hearing to receive public comments regarding a proposed resolution making certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of capital improvements pursuant to an installment financing agreement requesting the local government commission to approve the financing agreement. And Mr. Hennecut, you may have some comments.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. We do have Ted Cole with Davenport, who is with us here today to talk about this project. As a board, it's where we kind of started looking at this in last year's budget. There were some projects that we wanted to finance and with some changes that happened and, you know, we did run into some issues with projects. We paid a lot of cash for a lot of projects, and now we wanted to go back and do some financing that would also help our fund balance as well. So there are five projects that we're looking at. I appreciate the work that Allison and her staff has done and also Ted and Davenport in getting out the bids and the recommendations. Ted has given you a copy of a memo with his recommendation on financing. And with that said, I'll turn it over to Ted. Thank you for being here today.
Glad to be here. Good morning. I'm Ted Cole with Davenport. We serve as financial advisor to the county on capital planning activities. And as the manager said, in this case specifically, a potential borrowing for a number of projects. I believe you all have a memo from us that kind of goes through the process at a pretty high level, and I'll talk through that quickly here. We do have five projects that are being considered to be financed. Voting equipment, radio communication system, radios themselves, some software for financing and planning, and then an E911 call center in Emergency Services Building. We put together a request for proposal. We sent it out to 70-some banks. We keep a list of banks that have requested to see these proposals. And we asked for four options. We have, some of these projects are kind of short-lived, meaning their, you know, seven-year term is an appropriate term to pay those back because they won't be a long-lived asset, and others are longer-term in nature. So you'll see under our options, we asked for seven-year rates as well as 15- and 20-year rates, so that for the shorter assets, we could amortize those over seven years, and for the longer-term assets, we could amortize those over 15 or 20 years. And we asked for some different rate options, blending the borrowing into a single loan where you had sort of the first seven years were front-loaded, and then you're left with just the remaining long-term assets. And we asked also if they would give us separate rates, seven-year rate versus a 15-year rate or a seven-year rate versus a 20-year rate. So we went through that. We determined that the county will be able to borrow this installment on a bank-qualified basis. When you see BQ in our list or in our memo, that stands for bank-qualified. If we can carry that designation, it positions us to get a slightly lower rate from some banks. If they're lending to us on a bank-qualified basis, some banks will give us a slightly better rate. So that's a positive, that we, talking with staff and talking with your bond attorneys, were able to determine that the bank-qualified designation would apply. We received proposals from seven different lenders at the bottom of page one. You can see them. Not all of them are necessarily household names, but we deal with all of them. They're pretty active in lending to local governments. And I would note that on item five, Truist, that is the new name that BB&amp;T and SunTrust are operating under now that they have merged. It really, the proposal is coming out of the legacy BB&amp;T group, and their proposals and their process look a lot like BB&amp;T loans did over the years, but they're technically now working under this new name since their merger has taken effect. All right? So if I go to page two, you'll see a matrix of all of the different rates that we received from these banks. And we've highlighted in green those that we will dig into in a little more detail. Those are the ones that were the most competitive and compelling, and you'll see that it's really for two banks, Sterling Bank and Truist or BB&amp;T. And we're going to focus on those BQ rates, not the NBQ. NBQ is non-bank-qualified. We asked for those rates, but we determined that they're not needed, meaning BQ will be appropriate here. So you'll see there's slightly lower rates, particularly from Truist for those BQ rates in green. Prepayment provisions, you'll see Sterling allow for a prepayment in whole or in part. The partial prepayments can only happen once a year on any payment date with a 1% penalty for the, it's non-callable for the first six years, and then it's a 1% penalty in years six through eight and its par thereafter, meaning no penalty. Whereas Truist allowed for a prepayment in whole at any time with a 1% penalty for the first half of the loan and no penalty for the second half of the loan. Fairly standard prepayment language. Not every bank does it exactly alike, but for both of these banks, these are pretty typical prepayment terms that they've offered. Okay? So we have rates that we are known and locked in. We have prepayment provisions. We, at the top of page three, they do have some bank fees. Truist or BB&amp;T in this case has $7,500 for their bank council. That is typically rolled into the loan along with the other issuance costs. That's how they typically bid their proposals. Sterling did not have any. So when we do our comparison down here at the bottom of three, we're capturing all of those things. We're capturing those BQ rates, the different terms of the debt, some of it's seven years, some of it's 15 or 20 years, and any related bank costs for the financing. And what you'll see when you look at this table on page three, there's four basic sections. So the first section is columns B, C, and D. That's where Truist gave us the bank-qualified rates, and they gave us a short-term rate and a long-term rate. And when we look at those together, you'll see under column D, the total payback. You'll see down there in the fiscal year debt service, it's a little bit front-loaded because you have some of this that's paying back over seven years. This is the 15-year term for the long-term assets, and the total payback over the life of the loan, I'm going to round up slightly, is 11.48 million. Okay? We're borrowing 10 million for projects. We've got all of the project costs listed here, and we've gone through those with your staff. I think those are all pretty firm at this point. We've got a placeholder for the cost of issuance of the transaction. What we're ending up with is a borrowing that's going to be right at 10 million. So that's the first option. The one next to it is Truist, and the only difference is it's under columns E, F, and G. They've given us the seven-year rate, but instead of 15, they gave us a 20-year rate for those longer assets. We can, we essentially choose to fund those longer assets over 15 or 20 years. And you'll see that the total payback on that is 2.16 million. Again, it's a little front-loaded in the early years, and then it steps down. To the right of that, under column H, is Truist again, but rather than the two pieces, we've just, they've given us a blended rate, and that's 11.5 million. So that column should compare to column D. It's getting you to the same place. Column D, we have two separate rates that we will amortize together, and that's 11.48 million, whereas with the rates they gave us for a single amortization blended between short and long term, they're 11.5. So the conclusion we take away from that is that the two separate rates from Truist Bank are better than the blended rate from Truist Bank. And it really doesn't cost, it doesn't cost at all anything different to have those two rates. There's no additional legal work, and staff will be able to pay those, you know, just the same as they would in a single rate. So it's really, you should be indifferent to which way you do it. I think you can clearly focus on the debt service payments as your deciding factor there. So, and it's better than Sterling Bank. Truist has a better proposal than Sterling. So if you like the 15-year term for the long-term assets, the recommendation would be that scenario, option one, that's under columns B, C, and D. The same is holding true for the 20-year option. The two rates are better than the blended rate. Column G is a lower payment than column J. G is two rates for 27 and 20 years. J is a blended rate. The Truist is better than Sterling, and again, the two rates from Truist are better than the single rate from Truist. So if you like the 20-year payback on the long-term assets, that option two is the most favorable. Which takes us to our recommendation at the top of four. We have been doing, as I think many of you know, work with staff, looking at the capital plan and the way that you budget for debt service. You have a very specific methodology on how you budget for debt service. Any of these options flow through that model just fine. There's no tax adjustment needed. There's no resources needed beyond what you're already budgeting for debt service. And talking through this with staff, we've landed on a recommendation of option one, which is the Truist proposal, and it's the two different rates and limiting the longer-term borrowing to the 15 years rather than the 20. So that's our recommendation, although you all can feel free to discuss that and go in a different direction if you'd like. The general timetable is with the meeting today, you've got a public hearing, and then ultimately, we would ask for you all to consider selecting the winning bank and adopting the resolution that was prepared. If that were to happen on August 4th, the Local Government Commission would consider this. We have been working with the Local Government Commission in Raleigh to get this position for their meeting in August. They're prepared for it. If it does get approved here, and if all of that were to happen, we would be able to close the loan by around August 21st. That's the point at which you have the funds in hand for your projects. But either way, the rates are locked in today. It's just a matter of getting approval. So we have no variability in the interest rates. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. You're, this is based on 10 million.
Yes.
What would happen, and we can do the 10 million without a tax increase.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
What about if we went to 20 million?
I think at that point, we would have, in that capital plan, we would have a shortfall that we would have to plug with some other source of revenue.
And we have not identified the additional $10 million worth for projects at this point to get us in the timeframe for the LGC and approval. But it is an option. It is an option.
Well, let me tag on to that. You make a good point about the Local Government Commission. Generally speaking, the Local Government Commission, who has to approve this, they want, they have to make a finding themselves that your borrowing is adequate but not excessive, not too much, not too little. And the way they do that is they require bids for all of your projects. So we've got bids or quotes that substantiate the 10 million. We would not have them at this point to go to another 10. So I think that would be an issue for them, even though, you know, you probably can spend it on real capital projects, and we like the interest rate environment, and we like the, you know, the ability to do this. I think that's where we would run into a problem, is not being able to substantiate where the other 10 million would be spent.
My next question is just from my own information. What's a blended rate? What does that mean?
They, so we have the two, right? The seven and the 15?
Yeah.
Those are two distinct rates. Then all they do is they, we showed them what the principal would look like for a single rate, and they just did their calculation on the fact that the rate goes out 15 years, but it's fairly front-loaded because we got those first seven years. So they just go through their model, and they come up with a single rate versus two separate rates. Either way, the rates are fixed for the entire term of the loan, and it just so happened the way they bid it that the two separate rates is a bit better than where they landed on their single blended rate.
Any questions from any commissioners?
Is the blended rate is 2.1?
Yes, so on the option one that we're recommending, if you go back to page two, you can see it probably better. It's a combination of a 150 rate and a 218. The 150 rate is the seven-year. You see that? It's in the far-left green box.
Put that on your screens now.
Okay, thank you. The 150 rate is the seven-year rate, and the 218 is the 15-year rate. And when you go over to option three, under column F, as in Frank, at the very bottom, it's a 218. So when we run those numbers, you do better by the 150-218 combo than you do with the 218 for the whole piece.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Director. Yes, Mr. Director.
I suppose the question I have is, we've actually taken dollars out of our reserves in order to pay this, and we're just repaying ourselves. And so my question would be, why would we want to go with the short-term, the 1.9, which is the non-capital projects? These would be the software and voting equipment that you can't finance long-term. So my question is, why would we be borrowing the 2 million? Why wouldn't we just go and borrow the monies for the capital improvements, the towers, those things that are going to be capitalized over 20 years, and borrow those on a 15-year? In other words, I'm pretty good with the 8 million on reimbursement. I have somewhat of a difficulty in regards to the 2 million, because if the funds are available, we've got them, so why would we reimburse us that?
Well, when we were originally looking at projects to get us, you know, to make it worthwhile for the issuance, you know, you really don't want to go out and borrow 1 or 2 million dollars. So we were looking at making it a good issuance for the county and looking also at capital projects where we have used our fund balance for. And that And, and that goes back to the point Ted made, we're really only financing those seven years. So, so the, the software and the others, you know.
Agreed, but, but by doing so, if I'm reading this correctly, the first year payback is going to be 1.1 million.
Between the two pieces, yes, sir.
With the two pieces. So if you eliminated the 2 million and just borrow only the 8 million, you would lower that down to 699, 700,000.
Correct. So. And then I think the question would be if, if those are, that 2 million are approved projects, do you have that in the FY '21 budget?
Well, actually, we've already, we've already done those projects.
We have, we've spent, well, most of the funds because the software project's not completed, so maybe about half. So yes, we could, we could cash flow those if, if that was the board's wishes. When we did the 1920 budget, the decision at that time was to lump these projects together and to finance them. However, at that time, the 911 center was not in that grouping of projects. So since that time, we've added the 911 center. And so if you chose to remove the short-term projects from a cash flow standpoint, I'm comfortable with that and we could certainly, we could certainly do that. I mean, I think Ted might have to give us some direction on how that might change our timeline for financing, if it, if it does at all.
Yeah, I think everything that's been approved has been discussed as not to exceed. So the ability to come down, I believe that's flexible.
I'm going the opposite way. But, but I'm saying, I think it's a fair compromise where basically the county is in fact paying for the smaller projects, the non-capital projects. And we borrow the monies for the capital projects. And it would drop your payments over those first five years from 1.1 million down to 700,000. So it's about a 400 grand difference in payments.
And that, that will flow through the capital plan because the way, the, the way it's working now, we are reimbursing for those short-term projects. They're going back into the capital plan and they, they will be a resource to you in the future for some other project, whether it's cash-funded or debt-funded. But certainly can, you know, amend that going forward to say, look, we, we're not going to reimburse ourselves for that 200, excuse me, that 2 million.
Question though, is that you're dropping from 10 million to 8 million, right?
Right, correct.
Is that, all right, will our interest rates stay the same?
Yes, the very high level of comfort that they're not going to change the rate because of that. That's not an uncommon.
Okay, well, I'm okay with doing what you're saying.
I was going to say, if we do what he suggested, is there any downside that you said?
I think, I think the only potential downside is just how that flows through the, the capital model for future years. It'll, it'll, it'll remove $400,000 a year of debt service, right? Because we're not borrowing for that any longer. But it also, by not reimbursing yourselves, it removes that 2 million from the capital reserve that will, you know, just be fewer resources in that model. So it's, you got it, it's, it's a little bit of both. It's got both sides and I don't know that it's an absolute downside, it's just a change in the model.
So do you have the cash now or later, basically? Can you just?
Yes, Mr. Dougherty.
That, that was, that's my point. You know, the, the 2 million we're talking about would basically come out of fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. My concern is, and here I am giving my opinion again. Somewhere down the road, is that 2 million dollar going to play in if we have an emergency? Are, are we going to have that 2 million dollars in fund balance? I mean.
Not unless, not unless we have additional revenues that would, that would.
Let me rephrase that. If we'd have to pull out of 2 million dollars for an emergency or something, is that going to get our capital, our fund balance, is it going to get it down in the critical area?
So I, I don't think, so for 1920, 2021 is, is sort of, is sort of hard to predict because we don't know what our long-term impact with COVID is going to be on our, on our sales taxes. And so I can comfortably say, I think for not, as of 1920, where I think our fund balance is going to land, that we're okay. But I just, I don't know for 2021, that, that would be, and then you have to consider other things about, you know, if we, if we pursue any other major capital projects where we want to cash fund something. So with what I know right now, I'm comfortable with it, but it, it does limit what you have available with cash on hand.
Well, that, that's my concern is, is, and we've discussed several times, at some point, we've got to quit digging into fund balance. And I know, to me, 2 million dollars is a lot of money and, and when you compare it to the county budget, maybe it is a small percentage, but, but 2 million dollars is 2 million dollars. And I just don't want to be in a position that, you know, if we have an emergency or something come up, that is it going to affect our fund balance enough that this, that the local government commission is going to start questioning what we're doing?
That's a good question. I hadn't thought about that.
I don't think we're going to see interest rates any lower than this.
That's what I was getting ready to say. Is not now the time to borrow, if we're going to borrow as far as interest rates?
I mean, I think you could make that case that rates are at their near historical lows and, and, and earning rates are, are pretty low.
Zero.
Or zero. I mean, when you look at column B as in Boy, right? That's the 2 million dollar borrowing that we're talking about. And it's, you know, the net interest expense over the life of the loan is, give or take, it's about $80,000, right? So you're borrowing the two, you're paying back 2 million, 80,000. And just, it, it's unknown in the future, right? There's just, all things being equal, there'll be, for the, for the, for the next several years, it'll be 2 million dollars less in your reserves there if you just choose to cash fund and not reimburse yourselves. I think the capital plan can be managed, but I suppose there's a reasonable discussion about what the future holds with the need to tap into reserves. I think that's a valid point. But from a bank perspective, from the local government commission perspective, we should be good because none of those projects or assets in that 2 million were being used as collateral for the loan. We were just using the building in the 8 million. So I don't think the bank will have a problem either way.
Are we still a triple-A county?
Double-A county.
Double-A?
Double-A. And always had been since we've worked with you and, and I think going back to the past.
Never been a triple-A?
Years ago, people would be able to buy bond insurance and get a triple-A rating, but on their own, without that insurance, they might not have been there. But you're a, you're a solid double-A county, probably one of 30 or so in the state.
Well, I've been a proponent of watching our fund balance and Commissioner Dougherty brought up a good point. My concern is, is that over the years I've been on this board, we've been hit by things outside that's beyond our control. Case in point, classroom size from 21 to 17 size, but no brick and mortar money to help us build schools. These things we didn't know about were coming, but they came. Several other things have come out of the woodwork at us that we had no control over. And I'm, I agree with Mr. Dougherty. We really do need to protect our fund balance and maybe if, if 2 million is not going to make a difference whether we, at, at our borrowing power. In other words, our borrowing power, if we borrow all 10 million, number one, we get the lowest interest rates we can get. Number two, if it doesn't affect our borrowing power in the future, maybe we need to look at borrowing the whole 10 million. Just my thought.
I mean, like it or not, we all know, we've discussed it and I'm, and we'll bring up an entirely different subject, but we, we all know at some point, this county is going to have to do something about a jail. I mean, we, we've kicked this can down the road and kicked it down the road and we've taken care of part of it. But it, but at some point, that, that old facility is going to be at the, at the point that we cannot keep, we can't afford to keep it up. I mean, it's going to be cheaper to build a new one than to keep that one up. I mean, because it was outdated the day they opened the doors on it. And a million dollars is a million dollars.
Any other comments?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I, I don't want to get into too much of a discussion on this, but if I'm following this correctly, the concern would be by not borrowing the 2 million dollars, that you are protecting the fund balance. But do recognize in order to balance this year's budget, last year's budget, and the year before, we're taking monies from fund balance to balance the budget. And you're adding an additional, I, in my proposal of deleting the 2 million, I'm sorry, if you retain the 2 million, you're going to add an additional $425,000 next year to come from fund balance. All I'm saying is don't borrow it to start off with. Just borrow the 8 million. You're already going to be adding $700,000 to come from fund balance, about, about next year's budget. And I'm just trying to find a compromise here. If we needed it, I would say borrow it, but it's not necessary that we absolutely replace the 2 million that we're paying out of our fund balance. That said, I'm good either way.
Even, my point though, is that even if we don't borrow the money, when it comes to balancing the budget every year, this may not be the overriding theory of why we have to take money out of fund balance to balance the budget. It may be another factor. So I don't think you can really say that we're going to be balancing our budget based on this because that, there's a lot of other factors that go into that, right?
And, and I, I think Commissioner Dougherty said very well, it, it is six, one half dozen of the other. And, and Allison, you correct me if I'm wrong here. It would be nice to have the 2 million dollars back in our fund balance on capital projects that we said that we were going to finance and, and that would give us a little bit of flexibility down the road. However, on the flip side, would I like not to have to fund $366,000 in the general fund? Yeah, that, I, I would not like, you know, if I could, anything I can do to lower debt service on a payment for a fiscal year, I'm happy. I, I, I think it, it works on either side. It, it's just whatever the board is comfortable with. Again, what we put in originally was because this was the plan all along and I think because the interest rates are so low.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Dougherty.
Allison, do you disagree?
Everyone, everyone has made good points. I mean, I'm not disagreeing with, with any, anyone else on the board. I, I just want all the facts and, and everything on the table so we hopefully make the right decision. I'm certainly not disagreeing with Mr. Dougherty. I mean, he makes, he makes a perfectly good statement on it, but, but I just want to make sure that, that, that we make the right decision because we haven't always made the right decisions in some cases, you know? And, and, and I, and I, I really don't know what the right decision is on this. I mean, you know, the point that I make makes, makes sense and, and what Mr. Dougherty says makes sense. I, I just, we've got to rely on you and, and our finance director to, to help lead us in the right direction.
Yeah.
Mr. Page.
One other point, if I'm bouncing itself, if I understand it correctly, it is not the stage, not just that amount of money. There's money that flows in and flows out. So at any, any year, you may have more money that flows in than you flow out. So if you, it's true now.
A lot of flowing.
Yeah, because our expenses may not be as high and revenues may be. I, so I agree, I agree with both points. It could be either way, it doesn't really matter. I think we're not, we're not in the position that our fund balance is in a critical position at all.
And, and we have.
But I do like the interest rates.
Yeah. And, and, and if you look at, at fund balance, we have spent a lot of money on capital projects over the last couple of years. And again, so we, we, I think Allison or you, that we're, we're fine either way.
Yes, I mean, this is, this is solely based on what, what our plan was since last year and we've just been moving forward with it based on the timeline we discussed. So I'm comfortable either way. I think Davenport's comfortable either way. It's, it's really at the, it's really what the board chooses to do.
Yeah, we, we are comfortable either way. I, I, I don't think one is an absolute better approach than the other. Having some reserves in, you know, additional reserves in there, I guess generally adds flexibility down the road for the unknown, but we're talking $400,000 a year of debt service that you could avoid by, by not including that. And that's, that's going to give you flexibility in your budget as well. So I really wish I could give you better guidance, but I, I don't think there's a wrong decision here.
Mr. Chairman. I, I know you're ready to move on, but.
No, I'm just flipping the coin.
Do we in fact have any specific capital projects that we are currently looking at where the 2 million dollars that we would borrow at 1.5%, which is very attractive? Is there something, some need right around the corner that, in other words, I'd hate to find in six months that we need to borrow 2 million dollars?
You need 2 million dollars.
So is there a need around the corner that we need to be looking at?
The school lottery would, would only, would be my only.
The what now?
The lottery grant, the lottery application we've talked about because that would be money that we would have to put up.
Come up front.
That would be the only, that's the only thing that I know of that's possibly near-term.
We've talked DSS, you know, the renovation of the Busman Building. Again, that project's on hold. That could be up to a 6 million dollar project. You know, originally, we were going to look at funding, instead of the 911 center, funding the DSS as part of this capital project, but we have put that on hold at this point. So we went ahead and funded the capital project that, that we knew that we already were using local dollars for, so.
Well, let me bring up Pandora's Box here then. And you brought it up, but if you recall, we basically moved away on the DSS building. Are we now ready to move forward with a design build on the DSS bill?
I, I would still recommend to the board, until we get through some of this COVID stuff, that, that we wait six months and see, and see where we're at and.
Well, then qualifying that, are you saying within the next six months, we probably would be looking at that? Now, we're assuming we're finally going to come out of this COVID-19.
That would be the number one capital project moving forward, once we get, we feel like to a steady, you know, our, our feet on steady ground would be the DSS project.
If that being the case, then undoubtedly the 1.5% interest rate would be very attractive and you'd want to go in and borrow it then. Okay, thank you.
But, but we still need to get the engineering drawn on DSS.
Right, right.
And if we do that, if we, if we get those drawn, and I'm going to run off the subject here a little bit, but if we do that, it doesn't keep us from, actually, we would, we could actually go out for bids if we wanted to, right?
Well, it depends on how long the bids will be valid for, you know?
If we went to design and build, we could, we could do some processing on that, even though it's, the project's on hold, by the time we were to do that, six months would probably be passed. That's what I'm saying. Okay? So.
But, but again, if we, if we just turn budget, it was just kind of, my recommendation was not to move forward on any capital projects until we had a better understanding of, of how COVID was going to affect us. But hopefully in three to four months and once we get into it, we'll, we'll get a better understanding.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Now, let's back up for a second. We're still are in a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, is anyone wish to stand and speak at this public hearing regarding a proposed resolution, making certain findings and determinations regarding the finance. regarding the financing of capital improvements pursuant to an installment financing agreement, requesting the Local Government Commission to approve the financing agreement? Is there anyone that wishes to come and speak? Anyone wish to speak?
I've told nobody's down in the grand jury.
Okay, all right, so the public hearing is closed at this time. Okay, is, does the board have a preference on this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move, we accept the recommendation, moving forward and borrowing the $10 million as recommended.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Or is there any? What am I to say? Sorry about that. I, I forgot to tell you. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay.
I'm sorry, we beat that dip, that horse to death, though, didn't we?
Yeah, we did. We needed to have that discussion, which we did. Well, we certainly missed our other public hearing, didn't we, at 9:30? But that's okay.
That's all right.
So, yeah, this time, I'd like to call for another public hearing, the second public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed franchise for North State Investment Group, LLC, DBA North State Medical Transport, and MedX Medical Transport Services Incorporated to furnish non-emergency medical transport and other medical transport as required. Now, do you have any comments on that?
I, I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And again, this is our required second public hearing. We had our first public hearing at our last meeting. What this is, will allow us to franchise with two different non-emergency transport companies to provide that service here in Wayne County. Currently, we have a franchise agreement with North State Medical that had a timeframe on it from 6:00 AM, or 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. That, that was their timeframe they were allowed to use. However, with the winding down of Wayne Net, we need to allow them to go 24/7. And also, we need additional capacity because North State cannot handle this all by themselves. So we need additional capacity with MedX to provide that service here in Wayne County. So with your approval, we would make the changes to our franchise agreement, and also to add MedX as an approved franchisee for the county.
Okay, is, is there, does any commissioner have any comments before we open up the public hearing?
Look, don't, 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 we need to hear from the public first before.
Yeah, well, we can, but we, I mean, okay, I can do that. All right, so at this time, the floor is open to anyone that would like to speak on this public hearing, on this franchise. If you would come up and give your name. You don't have to give your address and phone number, except to Ms. Carol. She, she needs to write it down for the record. But publicly, because of security reasons, you only need to give your name. So anyone who wish to speak, come up to the podium, please.
You can simply write your address on the sheet at the end.
I guess.
That's even, even better. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm Jeff White again, with MedX Medical Transport. Just wanna thank you for the opportunity and give you, you know, an opportunity to ask me any questions if you might have.
Commissioner?
And we do wanna thank Jeff and, and MedX for what they're doing and, and preparing to get really ramped up and moving forward in Wayne County as well. So we thank you.
Our, our staff is comfortable with what, what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
I do have a question for you, Jeff. Would there be any new positions available since you're coming on to, to take over this service for Wayne County? Would there be positions added?
Yes, sir. It'd probably be in an average of 20.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else wish to speak this time? Anyone wish to speak? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Does the, does the board have a preference at this time on this issue?
I'd like to make a comment first.
Yes, you can.
I just want to thank our staff for the hard work they put into this. You know, we were kind of forced into starting our own non-emergency medical transport when Jazz went out of business. They get, they've made every effort in the world to make this work. It has been successful far as getting the patients to where they need to go. But, and I've had more conversation from the public on why we're doing away with it than I have anything else in a while. And, and it's, it's, we regret that we're having to do this. Hopefully that it's gonna actually create some jo- more jobs in Wayne County. But again, I wanna thank our staff for working through this. I know it, they were excited about trying to make it work, and they, and they, they made every effort in the world. But it's, at some point, you have to decide, you know, is it working or is it not working? And basically, it falls down to dollars. And, and I think we're making the right decision. We, you know, time will tell. But again, I just want to thank our staff for, for working on it like they have.
Any other comments? Okay. We, we can take action on this if we want to, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if no one else will make the motion, I shall. I move that we approve the franchise for North State Investment Group, LLC, DBA North State Medical Transport, and MedX Medical Transport Services Incorporated to furnish non-emergency medical transport and other medical transport for Wayne County.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Are there other, any other comments that need, that you wanna make at this time? Okay, all in favor of the proposal as read by Commissioner Daughery, would you raise your right hand, please? Okay, we are unanimous. Okay, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could follow up to what Commissioner Acocks said. I, I do wanna thank our staff from bidding it out. I wanna thank Legal for helping with the franchise agreement. They've cut a back in the net for the work that they've done, really to try to make this service work and work well. We really did work hard at this, and, and we appreciate you saying that. It is not an easy decision to make, to cut a service. We really do have some great employees within Wayne Net, and hopefully, you know, we have given them time to make a transition easy. And I think we do have two good companies that have come in that, that will do the job, but also be good employers as well. So, thank you.
Okay, at this time, we are open for public comments. Is there anyone? We have anyone? Okay, just in case, does anyone wish to speak at a public comments time? That's in, sitting inside four minutes? Okay, I declare our public comments section closed. Mr. Honeycutt?
Next, we have our consent agenda that we went over in our pre-agenda briefing. If there's no questions, we present that for your approval.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda. My Mr. Page, is there any comments at this time? All in favor of the consent agenda as proposed, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we talked about in the discussion of the agenda and adjustment, there are two requests that you have from the Wayne County Board of Elections. One was a recommendation to enter into a contract with Mr. Dane Beavers to consult with the Board of Elections for the 2020 election cycle in the amount not to exceed $30,000. We've been trying to work with them to get some clarification, but again, it was a hundred dollars an hour, again, not to exceed 300 hours. So that is a recommendation from the Board of Elections.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Page.
I wanna make a motion not to approve that recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, not to approve this recommendation. All in favor of not approving this recommendation, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries.
The second request from the Board of Elections is a request to add the new position of Elections Administrator, and you do have a copy of that job description in your pack.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Page.
I move that we not approve adding the new position of Elections Administrator.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, not to approve the new administrative description job as Commissioner Daughery read. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. Motion carries.
Just a couple of comments. I do wanna thank our Health Department for the work that they have done on our testing. We still do have testing next week in Grantham. We've got a couple additional testing sites that we're looking at. So testing is going well through the county. And the positive thing is, the rate of positive has been very low for those people we have tested. So I think it was about 3%, if I can remember correctly. So, but things are going well. I also wanna thank our Emergency Management Coordinator, Aaron Stryker, for the work that he's doing, getting ready for hurricane season. So along with COVID, we're getting ready for hurricane season, and we're moving forward. And with that, that's all I have today.
Okay. Commissioners' comments? We're gonna start, we're gonna start with a new guy today. How about that? You would do that to me, wouldn't you?
No pressure.
Yeah, Commissioner Anderson, do you have any comments you'd like?
Yes, I do. I'm happy to be here, and hopefully I can continue the success that we've had on this, this board. One thing I'm, I'm happy to see is that the fund balance is in there, in the forefront of everybody's mind, and maintaining that. And that's basically it.
Thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Acocks?
I have nothing today, other than thank y'all for letting me have the honor of presenting Mr. Anderson that resolution. That was, appreciate y'all letting me do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Carmody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to follow up on a comment that our manager made about the success of the testing that's going on around the county. And let me say that's a, that's a positive. I perceive that to be a positive venture on the part of our county. But I would like to ask this question. I know you don't have the answer to this, but I want to ask this question. To reach out to our Health Department and our, the appropriate. How does that 3% that you say our positive rate stack up against the rest of the state? And the reason that I ask that is, most of what we see without a lot of explanation is that the state of North Carolina will be dark red. Then on another scale, it'll show as maybe pink and so forth, so on. That doesn't give you a lot of information. They just, but it does say one thing. We know the darker red it is, as far as I'm concerned, the more danger we're in. And North Carolina is one of probably 10 or 12 states that swings through the South and the Southwest that looks to be blood red most of the time. And that's where it appears that our problems are most prevalent in the, in America, and when you take in Arizona, California. And what I would like for this board to have a presentation by someone, and, and I don't mean another politician like us. I'm talking about a medical staff, someone from the medical community that can give us a real overview of what our real status is in North Carolina. How much danger are we in being just going from place to place? And the fact that nationally, it seems there is a real hard push to start our schools up immediately. Now, I, I may just be a little bit more sensitive than some. All of my family work in education, and I, and the only four grandchildren I have are in public schools. So this whole business about when we actually go back to school is very sensitive to me. I understand there's been a lot of discussion on which plan that, that may be appropriate. And I believe that decision may be already made, or at least there's some surveys out that might push it in one direction or another, and, and that's fine. My concern is, when we will actually start back to school based upon the scientific data. I'm not interested in opinions from anyone on any board, I, I, because opinions are good, but opinions are just opinions. I want someone from our Health Department, our hospital, whomever would be appropriate, Mr. Manager, to come before us and give us a hard, factual overview as to where we are. That's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner O'Rourke?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I had the opportunity last week to spend a little time at the Maxwell Center during their food giveaway. And what that organization's doing out there is doing a marvelous job. And a lot of volunteers went out there to, to assist Mr. Quick and what he does. But I just wanna commend that organization and the organizations throughout Wayne County of what they're, they're doing for the citizens of Wayne County.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
I don't see much comments, but kinda looking at an update, I continue to get texts and emails. I got one yesterday from a gentleman who's an engineer around Seven Springs who desperately needs broadband. And I know we've got the tower going up over there at the fire station. Where's the, how are we on that? I mean, halfway?
The tower's up.
Tower's up. So Open Broadband could actually go in and put their equipment there, right?
It's not, it's not in, the tower's not in, the tower's up. And I think the broadband, is that the dish just going on it? There's a dish sitting there anyhow?
That, that may be part of a repeater. That, I'm not sure. We actually, I, I got a email from the school system yesterday with their concern about broadband across the county, so I've asked.
That's part of it.
Right. I've asked for a request and an update from Open Broadb- Open Broadband and Alan Kilpatrick. So hopefully, he's supposed to be giving me that this week, the timeline and the, the whole nine yards.
Those people in that little area that are not being serviced, that should solve their issue, I believe. I think I remember him saying that when he was here.
Yes, sir.
Is that the only area that we have that's, that's in question at this time?
We got to give you Rick a tower, too.
Well, you're right.
Yeah, still, still the rest of the county. But also, we're back working on the NC Great Grant and where that stands, and making sure that everything's been applied and moving forward because we were supposed to be applying the second phase. It's about a 1.4 million. So we're still working on that with Open Broadband in the state, so.
Yeah, those, those people down there and in northern part, they, they deserve to know that we're still working on it, Hor.
Chip, also, we're, Open Broadband is working with the library for a, a Wi-Fi location in Dudley as well. So it's about a $70,000 project.
Contact him.
Right.
It's like, we're gonna have, we're gonna have children that's gonna be starting a school in Wayne County that won't have access to broadband.
Oh, they're gonna have, they have to go to hospitals.
So they have to go to a particular place, like a parking lot of a library, in order to get on. That's unacceptable. I'm sorry. It, it just is. That's the way I feel. I think it's a disservice to our children, our teachers, and everybody when we cannot. Commissioner Page's been working on this thing, he and I, for five years or longer. And, and there's no reason for us not to be covered. And there's no reason for us not to be covered with broadband. And I'll shut up with that. Mr. Page, go ahead.
I told him to have to turn it over to Mr. Gurley when he comes in here and gets somebody to save. But, and, you know, we have been focused on this thing for a long time. And I know the staff's worked hard on it. And it took a long time to even be able to get somebody who would even be interested in it. Because when we made the offer originally, we didn't, the deep pocket people didn't pay us any mind.
Yeah.
That's true.
You still have to have a business case.
Yeah.
Make it profitable for a private.
That's right.
Without us subsidizing, you know, our cycles, about $40,000 to $50,000 a tower.
Well, engineering study is very expensive, too.
Yeah.
It's a process. It's not gonna be an overnight.
Yeah.
Right.
We do have a lot of coverage in the southern part of the county. Obviously, you know, with a couple of these grants, that would help improve some of it, but it's not gonna be 100%.
Well, I certainly didn't want to give the impression I'm discrediting what y'all been doing.
We, yes, we understand the frustration.
I just needed to know.
That was not the intent.
We fully understand the frustration. And this is, we're trying to help facilitate with Open Broadband. We don't, there's not a lot of control that we have with respect to holding them to timelines and stuff. We're just, our job is really to push them forward, especially on the open grant, those type things and trying to bring concerns. As Chip said, we want to bring areas that are in desperate need. So, we'll make that business case for them to make sure that they got the customers there before they put the dollars in the infrastructure in. So, we are working with them.
Well, let me answer this question. And I don't mean, it certainly doesn't make sense if I would throw money at it, Chip. But you said that, you mentioned a dollar figure, at least for the towers that it would take. Is this the one-time fee we're talking about?
Chip's expert. He's the chief of the chief's expert.
Well, it's probably not a one-time fee. I don't know how long that technology will sustain itself at the tower. But I'm, it's probably a good five or 10 years worth of use of that. And according to what Mr. Allen said here previously, it was $40,000 to $50,000 per tower to put the antennas on top of a tower. Now, that's.
How much, how many more towers do we need? You don't know that?
I do not know that.
I mean, are we talking two, three, four? What?
More than that. He's got, we've got agreements that we can use all of our 911 communication towers. And they have agreements up to use the water towers.
Their actual equipment costs is $40,000, $50,000.
Yes. And if somebody wants internet service, I'm telling the same thing. You can call the company or you can go online and sign up at their company site. That's the way you get it because there has to be a need present first. They have to, if they have enough customers there, they're gonna put.
They're gonna put it out.
They're gonna put it there. The only other way we can combat that is if we go after grant monies to help fund it, you know, without coming out of their pockets. Or we come up with some other solution for that.
Has grants been turned on yet?
It's, no, sir. They're working on it as we speak.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah. And one thing that's confusing the general public is these towers all over the county. But what they don't understand is that most of those towers are privately owned by one of the, one of the, like Spectrum and Time Warner or whoever, all of them. And if you go on their towers, it's expensive. And a lot of the towers are fooled. I mean, they can't, you can't put so much on a tower. And even a lot of the towers that's out there basically are fooled. So, you know, they just, you know, from where I live, you can see three different towers. But that doesn't mean that they're, that they can be used. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You're done? Okay. I thought we were having another commissioner there.
Well, they agreed some minutes ago.
Well, it was a good conversation. Mr. Doherty?
Today, I'm gonna give a shout out to the Jetport Commission. I want y'all to think about this. We reorganized the Jetport Committee into a commission a little over two years ago. And in those two years, there's just been phenomenal success out there by the new commission. Last week, we cut the ribbon and most of us attended, cutting the ribbon on the new hanger. It was a 10,000 square foot hanger and it's very impressive. But that hanger sits on a new pad. And the improvements for bringing in and actually developing the pad site ready, including bringing in the water, because as you're building these 10,000 square foot hangars, you had to have the water necessary to provide fire suppression. And we worked with our county water systems to actually bring in that main water line. It's just been a lot of improvements out there at the jet port. And I encourage everybody to go out there and just ride out there and see that. We are currently in the planning stage. And shortly, we're hoping to have completed by March of next year the new road going back connecting into the new pavement to that new hanger. But a lot of work and a lot of effort has been going in by this new commission. And I just want to applaud their efforts and their commitment and their success. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doherty, before we leave Mr. Doherty out, he has put a lot of time in this. And it seems like as much time as these guys have put in on broadband, Mr. Doherty's put in on the jet port. We did get a chance to go out there the other day and I had not visited it probably in a year, I guess. It was impressive. Question, is that hanger owned by us or do we make an arrangement for it to be built and leased? Is that our hanger?
That is our hanger.
It's our hanger.
We own it.
And so, the plane that was in there, of course, owned by a corporation.
Yeah.
That is, and the fact that we get tax revenue off of that plane sitting there, it's just one of those things that, if you're not right careful, you might wonder, is this whole thing worth it? But when you go out there and look and you have modern aircraft out there in Wayne County and some very elaborate equipment and believe me, Mr. Adrian and I stood beside one of them and had a picture taken. That was a very impressive piece of equipment standing beside of it. And that, that's just a shout out to the manager out there and everybody who's worked real hard to put that kind of thing in place. I know our sheriff in his department has some things out there that I think makes us feel a little safe for sheriff, that you have some equipment out there to be used in an emergency. I would like to think that if something real bad happened and you could have somebody in there in no time. And so, we appreciate that. Those are just some of the kind of things that may sort of look like a luxury sometimes, but that's impressive. Thank you.
Well, sort of following up on that, that was an impressive ribbon cutting and what's going on at the jet port. You know, the jet port pretty well stayed, it made some progress, but pretty well dormant for quite a few years for whatever reasons. But here the last couple of years, there's been a lot of improvements out there. The only thing that I was displeased about, it's the first time I've ever participated in ribbon cutting, that the scissors didn't cut the ribbon the first time I tried.
It was operating.
It was. Probably so. Probably so. But that was, that was a really good, and you're right, Mr. Carmody. You can get million, $2 million airplanes in these, you know, at Mount Olive in here. And you're talking about, you're talking about some good revenue coming from them.
I wanted us to go on and while, before you end up, say a little bit about Mount Olive Airport because that's impressive to have two airports in one county. And not second-rate, these aren't second-rate operations. These are very well-run operations and Mount Olive is constantly making improvements. So, it's really a little bit to brag about, two airports in one county.
Well, in my comments, the Mount Olive Airport and the Wayne County Jet Port is so important as to the next connection to economic development, which includes the Wayne County Development Alliance. We are going through major changes at our Wayne County Development Alliance. You'll be hearing about those as we move along. Thinking outside of the box, something we've never done before. Sometimes that's what we have to do in order to make things better. But having said that, I really was disappointed to a certain degree, and we all are, when you have an announcement that we have an industry that is closing. And SPX, APV, Baker, Thermo is closing their doors the first quarter of 2021. They have been here since 1982 along in that area. We started doing business with the bakery side, APV Baker, when they moved here in 1982. And of course, they have been sold and they are up in Clayton, now that side of it. But the Thermo side is closing, which affects 55 employees. Excuse me, that's bothersome to me. That's concerning to me. I guess my question is, is that I'm sure the WCDAs has done everything they can to try to retain this company. But in reading the, in reading the comments as to why they're closing, of course, they used the pandemic as part of it. But moving their jobs or moving to Wisconsin, they have a plant in Wisconsin. But they're also moving the jobs to China and Poland. And the first thing that popped in my mind, what in the world are they going to China when everybody else is coming back? You know? But that's their call. What I'm saying is, it's really concerning to all of us, should be, that we can, we need to try to keep looking, pushing for new industry as well as existing industry. We know that 85% of our job creation comes from existing industries. That doesn't mean that we shouldn't stop looking for new industry because somebody had to get them here to start with. Somebody had to be responsible to get APV, Thermo here, SPX to start with. So, we need to attack it from both ends. Having said that, we do have some points, issues coming up in our economic development along with a lot of other things that we got to consider. I also would like to make a comment about social distancing and these masks. They're the most aggravating things you can ever wear. But being a, being a person that's in the risk category, I feel like I need to wear mine, whether it does any good or not. I don't want to take the chance. I will say that we just lost a educator here in Wayne County who was a member of our Sunday School class. A lot of you know him. Mr. Wayne Williams passed away yesterday. And he started out with COVID-19. He got it, but he had a lot of other health issues. And he finally, he finally could not handle it. So, what I'm saying is, is that if wearing this mask will help me, then it's worth the uncomfortable feelings to do that. Our resolution doesn't say that we are demanding in this law that you wear a mask. It's just calling on all of us to be more self-responsive as to how we feel and what we want to do. So, other than that, is there any other comments from any of the commissioners? We do have to get back in the closed session, is that correct?
Yes, sir. You need to discuss matters with your lawyers to maintain the lawyer-client privilege.
Okay, we have a motion to go into closed session. Okay, motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, we are unanimous. We are in closed session and I would like to take a break.